Again, this, our agenda is Rowan's Law. We'll go through some step two regulations, some indoor competitions updates. Again, our coach eligibility, coach eligibility policy, and then some questions and answers. So let's dig in here. All right, Jo, you're up.
Thank you, Carrie. We have a lot of material to get through tonight. So I will get right into Rowan's Law, but welcome and thanks for attending tonight. We have a lot of important topics. So just to start off with Rowan's Law, I just wanted to put up a little bit of where Rowan's Law came from. Unfortunately, there was a tragic death of a 17-year-old rugby player in Ottawa. She was playing in a school rugby game and she did suffer from what was a condition as a second impact syndrome. So even though there were mild concussions that she suffered, it actually did lead to her death. And the family really responded really positively and proactively with wanting to make a change and protect all of our young athletes. So from there, there was a lot of, there's a lot of work put into how we can prevent the concussion. And so that's where you'll see this, this law is about preventing the concussion and avoiding this tragedy. So back a number of years ago was when it started and phase one, Rowan's Law has been in place. So now we're leading into 2022 where we're getting into phase two. So we'll just talk about where we are at phase one and now it comes into effect into this law and these regulations for 2022. Give me the next one there, Carrie. So Rowan's Law Phase One, where we are already and what you have been doing as being members of the OVA or any PSO, these are requirements that every single member prior to registering, you've acknowledged and you've reviewed the concussion awareness resources. So those are the ones that are on the ministry website. When you go into register and MRS, it's taken through and you're acknowledging that you have reviewed these resources. So they're resources around what is the concussion, preventing the concussion, recognizing it, what to do, how to get better and the return. So all the basics of a concussion and we all know our kids are also getting all that education as well at school. The other part of phase one was signing the code of conduct. So with the code of conduct, as I said, it includes the acknowledgement that you have reviewed the ministry resources. Also, within that, you're looking at the code of conduct and acknowledging that you are going to abide by that code of conduct of preventing and removing and sitting out and making sure that you're supporting any of the athletes that need assistance. So along with that, the OVA also had to establish a concussion policy. From that, we included in requirements about who and our members are required to take Making Headway, the free concussion online course. You'll see the heads up posters all over the place at our events. Just again, it brings back awareness. And also, we had to identify where in our sport the majority of concussions were coming from. And they were coming from hitting the ball and stepping under the net and the next person hitting it. So modified hitting drills, warm up, any way to avoid an athlete or coach or bystander or spectators getting hit by, getting hit by the ball. So that's all part of phase one and where we are. Great. Thank you, Carrie. So with phase two, they actually delayed the start of phase two. It was supposed to come in a year ago and that was going to come in in July and now it's here. So it is really here. So it is effective already in our lockdown world. So it's now an established removal from sport and return to sport protocol. It's not just recommended as it was stated in our phase one, it is now required. So they now have more rules around this protocol and who is responsible for making sure that this protocol is followed. So there are design, designates that need to be identified that are on site at practices, training competitions. They are responsible for ensuring that the athlete is removed if there's a suspected concussion and that they only return after medical clearance. So along with that responsibility, there's also informing and reporting around the concussion. So I'll get into more of that detail, but I just wanted to identify that this is what our coaches already do. So I do want to say that there isn't further education, there isn't further courses, there's no further requirements for the designates. It's just now stated as a formalized process and protocol. And I'll get a little, I'll get into the protocol in our next slide. So on, on the field of play on the court, the removal for sport protocol. If a concussion is suspected, the designate has a responsibility. They immediately must remove the athlete from the training, practice or competition. So keep in mind the designate is on site. If necessary, they call 911. They inform, they are required to inform the athlete's parent on that medical assessment is required before they're able to return. And they provide the, also again, providing resources, so providing the education resources. They provide that information, removal from the return to sport protocols. The chat's showing up in front of my slide. So I'm losing my slide, sorry. So from that, we have Volleyball Canada has prepared that resource material. So the Volleyball Canada Concussion Protocol, this is posted on our website. Our policy, the Volleyball Canada Concussion Protocol is very complete. So that is how you inform the, the parent. And you also have a responsibility to inform the parent and the athlete that are they playing sport elsewhere, if it's at school, at another club, that they inform them of the suspected concussion. That is part of the requirement as well for the designate to have a conversation with the, with the athlete and the parent. Also, a record of this incident has to be recorded and the athlete is not permitted to return until medically cleared by a physician or a nurse practitioner. So off the field and returning to the sport, the designate must receive, they will first have to receive the medical assessment that a concussion was diagnosed. They may, there may not have been a, it may have been a suspected concussion and then no concussion. So then they can return. If the concussion was confirmed, they must follow the graduated return to sport protocol. And the information that they receive from the medical professionals, they do have to share with designate. So there's also then the designate person informs, this is again, they make sure that the importance of disclosing the diagnosis with any other sports and the school that the athlete is with. So that is not the responsibility of the designate. The designate is responsible to tell the asset and the parent to do that. They recommend to do that. So just keep that in mind that it's not the designate that's calling up the other sports in the school and saying, hey, this has happened. It is the designate informing the parent that this is recommended to be done. And then the athletes and the designate has to make sure that there's only return to play once they have confirmation of that medical clearance. And then again, we keep record, there has to be a record of the athlete's progression and the medical clearance. She's going to be in the next slide, I know it.
Yeah, just a little reminder that if you're not on mute, please do so. Thank you.
Thanks. So how does this work? And how do we implement this in our structure and how our competitions and our clubs? So the club does have some responsibility here now in phase two. And it's not new. I just, I just want to bring that out. It's not new. It's just now formalized and we have a responsibility to share this and a responsibility to make sure that we protect our athletes. So the, the club will have to make sure that the designate is assigned. So as you can see from the requirement, the education of what the designate has, the coach does have this information. It doesn't have to be the coach that's designate. You may have another parent that has done the training or has reviewed the concussion material or a trainer. They could be the designate and it doesn't have to be the same person at every practice, but they must be on site. So designated persons, just to go through, again, they've reviewed the ministry's concussion awareness resources. As we all say, we have done when we signed up to be a member. They've completed Making Headway. You, others that are in attendance, they are obligated if they, if they do suspect a concussion, that they inform the designate. But the designate is obligated to remove the athlete if the concussion is suspected. And then designates must follow the removal from sport protocol. What we went through on that other slide, calling 911 if necessary, doing, sharing the resource material, informing, and then also following the return to sport protocol. So as I mentioned, the Volleyball Canada Concussion Protocol, there's a document. There's a link here. It's posted on our website. It's posted on Volleyball Canada's website. It has all the resource material about a concussion. It has even the medical assessment clearance letters, if you want to use those. It has the return, the suggested return to play, gradual return to play that Volleyball Canada has put together for volleyball. They also have the, they also have a concussion recognition tool and I believe it's my next slide. And that is just a quick, one page of just all the information around concussions. So it's a, it's a good material even for the designates to review. Or if there's someone that's filling in as a designate that isn't comfortable, it's a good, it's a good resource to have on hand. This is that, this is part of their Volleyball Canada's protocol that I was mentioning. So it has all of the, all of the steps all on one page. And then that kind of can give you a little bit of, of peace of mind of like, okay, I do know this is, this is the basic concussion piece that we've learned. We've been talking about concussions for years. It is here and it's all here on one page. So it's something if you, if you think, is this a suspected concussion, you can kind of run through this page. And that was actually the end of Rowan's Law piece. So as I said, actually Caitlin, if there's any questions on Rowan's Law and you want to cover those off, go for it. But I did want to say the, the updated OVA concussion policy is posted on the website along with this, the Volleyball Canada's protocol. Also, there was a whole slide deck that the ministry put together around the implementation of phase two. We posted that right on ours, even though it's also on the ministry website. And there's also the links through to the ministry resource. I forget the wrong name, resource awareness concussion information. Go Caitlin.
I have one question for you. What is the designate's responsibility if the athlete receives a concussion in another sport or club slash school? Do we still need to see all of the medical clearance information prior to returning to volleyball?
Yes. Can I just get a look? Yes. Yeah, you just want to make sure that they would have to bring back their medical clearance to you as well. They would have to share that with you before you would allow them to return. Because you think about it, right? You're like, you know, they have a concussion. Your, your responsibility is to keep that athlete safe. You can't just say, oh yeah, come back and play. I'm not the one responsible. So you're responsible for that athlete while they're at volleyball. And if they shouldn't be playing, then don't allow them to play. But as far as going through the gradual sport, it, it would need to be decided as far as who's, who's taking care of that as, from that. But you would think that you would still want to take them through your volleyball piece as well because you don't want to just jump them right in. But if they have the medical clearance letter, they can participate. But also as a coach and any of the other like coaching staff and the parents around, you know, the athletes that are there and you, and you will be able to observe and see if they are ready to return to play. Any other questions Caitlin?
Not right now. Return to do the return to play stuff.
Okay. And I'm just going to say one other piece. With the designate, we're happy to run a, like just a conversation and a discussion, a presentation just around what the designate would do. And so that's something that's an option if you, if feel free to, to request that. The other piece is, is that there's a lot of FAQs in that ministry deck on the implementation overview. So feel free to look at those as well. That actually helped when I was going through it to see what questions were coming up to the PSOs. And hit me Carrie with my return to play slide and then you guys can get into all the fun youth comp stuff. This, this part isn't fun. And then I see a question came up. It says, do we have to contact the school coach or just tell the parent to make the contact? As the designate, you're required to tell the parent and the athlete to make the contact. But obviously, that's something that we really hope the athlete understands the severity of that. That they, they, if they, if they have the mild concussion and they continue to go and play just because that person doesn't know, that's where we get into some really serious implications as what happened with Rowan Stringer. So regulations on return to play, I obviously pretty sure we got it figured out now. We're not playing. So that's unfortunate, but I just wanted to point out about outdoor. So outdoor can happen and it's great to see some snow volleyball happening. But you do have to operate as we were previously in this modified and lots of rules. Proof of vaccination is required upon entry and a safety plan must be in place. So the safety plan still has to include all those great things and how to mitigate risk and wearing masks and making sure it's your physical distance when you're not playing and all those things. So you know, feel free, have fun, play some snow volleyball. Or there was no snow on the weekend and they were playing down at Ash Bridges, which was hilarious. Now there's tons of snow, but just keep in mind that it still requires all of the rules and hopefully we'll get back to indoor soon. Thanks.
Do we have any questions or anything Caitlin?
There's just a couple of people who are a little confused about what we just said. This is the return to play regulations as of right now because Ontario doesn't allow sport right now. We will hopefully be out in January 26th, but we will know that hopefully this week. So we will be moving into talking about league play as the plan for when we are allowed out of lockdown. So as of right now, there is no sport like Joanne Jessup.
Let's hope we get the announcement soon. That's good.
I know. Okay. So just to ask some questions here, what are we accepting as proof of vaccination?
The Verify Ontario is the best way to do that.
What are the number limits for outdoor?
Depending on the facility. So that's where, that's why the safety plan's required. So depending on where you're playing and getting your permits to play.
And that's it. Thanks, Jo.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks, Jo. Okay, now it's Mark Wiersma, our youth competitions lead will take over and let everybody in on January to March for youth competitions.
Sorry, just to pipe right in, there was a clarification in the questions. Jo, for vaccination or is it QR code or just a type note?
Oh, the Verify Ontario should be used. So that would be scanning the, the enhanced digital certificates. They can print it or they can have it on their phone.
Okay, just kidding. Mark, now you're up.
Thank you, Carrie. And welcome everyone to what seems like the monthly youth competitions pivot presentation. And yeah, I just want to say just a general across the board. Thank you to everyone in the clubs and all the work that you guys have been doing so far this year. We know it's been a very, very challenging year for every type of administrator, athletes, officials, coaches. And yeah, so hang in there a little bit longer as we go through our next little phase that we have presented here. And fingers crossed, we can actually run these next two months as planned in this presentation. But if not, join us for our next pivot meeting as those are always fun. So to start off here, as Jo mentioned, obviously we're in stage two, which means no indoor volleyball. It's currently taking place. And so everything that we're looking at is for, I guess, the last announcement we heard from the government, which stated this current stage two is only until January 26th. So that's what we're assuming our plan going forward. So just a few quick highlights here. We did originally have tournaments on that last weekend in January, which technically is only two days after that potential stage two is over. Luckily, we're able to move the 16 new boys and girls event that was supposed to be at Niagara Convention Center just two weeks later as another weekend opened up there. And the 18 new boys and four and four girls rally ball are canceled for that weekend. As we did not feel, even if we happened to be able to come back along with the lost venues that we did have, it just wasn't an ideal situation to go right back into competition two days after being out for the previous month. And then a couple of the reasons why we're having to do this pivot again is we just can't rely on school boards opening up. We've been hearing rumors and just like you guys, oh, it'll be open a week, two weeks, three weeks. And especially with this increase in cases, we can't hold our breath anymore. And we just need to create a plan that can work without school permits for the rest of the season. And just to give you a snapshot, if we wanted to run our February to March the way we normally would run it, we are approximately short 117 venues with the school boards not being open. So that clearly means we need to change to a new plan. So a quick summary, as the PSO, we're here to play volleyball. And I know some different circumstances within teams and clubs might not make it the most safe situation for that team individually or that club specifically. But we do know there are a lot of teams and clubs that are wanting to play. So we're always going to create a schedule and plan a competition within the government guidelines. And then it's up to the clubs if they want to participate or not. So we're here to provide the opportunity for the people that are able to play. And as mentioned before, we, with all these changes that are constantly happening, we just need to be fluid and constantly adapt and look at the government regulations and see what we can do within that. And key note at the bottom, we are presenting these concepts now, but again, it all depends on the government regulations that come out. And even if something comes out now for the next three weeks, this entire presentation might change in a month from now. So this is based on our current knowledge at this very moment in time. Okay, so we're just going to go over each age group here in the next few slides just to kind of create a snapshot of what that specific age group is going to look like for the remaining last couple months of the season. So four and four rally ball, all single day tournaments as we typically know it would be are canceled during the Jan 29th to April 3rd timeframe. And the McGregor Cup will be replaced by winter league play, which will run from February 11th to Sunday, March 27. Registration deadline is January 23rd. And as a reminder, four and four rally ball is a developmental division. So every event, even if we had our normal plan of all five events, every event would be a developmental event, which means there's no standings, medals, final points, anything, which means the, there are no seeds going into the interior championships. So for four and four rally ball, the interior championships will be, like there will be no double serp, serpent, all that kind of system. It'll just be everyone placed into round robin style event and doesn't matter what seed you are, everyone would have the same shot at winning that event. Six on six and TNS, very similar to the four and four concept in that all single day tournaments are canceled for the remainder of the season and it will be replaced by a winter league play from February 11th to the 27th. One big difference between four and four and these two age groups is that this league play will actually count in terms of points medals and final standings. As you're probably all well aware, the first league play for six on six and TNS back in the fall, it was a developmental event and so that meant no points rewarded. And this definitely became a little wonky with how this all played out this year because the original concept being six on six being kind of an alternating between developmental and events that counted. And TNS being the first one was developmental, followed by four events that counted for points. So it did create a bit of a wonky scenario here now that we're going into one final event, then going into the interior championship with only one result. So we do know that is obviously a pretty big situation to kind of figure out in terms of how that would work for seeding going to OCs. As typically a seed would be based on your top two results. It's fairly accurate since you're playing three, four, even five events in the year. But this year with only one result and this next event is going to be, we'll have a rough idea just on some team's skill level based on the league play, just to kind of help spread out the top teams. But really the pods, it will be impossible to make them perfectly even across the board. So taking all that into account, we are looking at a type of self-declaration from the teams. We're not completely 100% sure. We're just starting to work through that now in terms of how many teams are going to be in each division and how that will exactly work within each age group. But once we get that entered out, we will be emailing the teams directly in each age group with the overview. This is the snapshot for what the plan is and then you'll have a bit more knowledge as to how you decide whether you, you think your team would best fit D1, D2 or D3. And important to also note, it's not 100% guaranteed because I have a feeling we'll have a few divisions that might have more requests than we actually have room for. And so we'll try our best to accommodate requests, but it is a bit of a give and take scenario where we won't unfortunately be able to honor every single request. 15U, so similar as the younger age groups, the single day tournaments that are currently scheduled on the old competitions calendar are canceled, but we are replacing the McGregor Cup with a single day tournament at the Niagara Convention Center. We had to adjust the dates just based on what was available at the convention center. So that would now be on the February 26th and 27th weekend. I believe the McGregor Cup was originally a couple of weeks earlier in February. So it is shifting down just two weeks. And unfortunately, we were not able to, we were only able to get Saturday and Sunday at the convention center, which means we are not able to get all tournaments through at that event. So there will be a few events, a few from 15 new boys and a few from 15 new girls that will be scheduled at our pre-booked OVA facilities. The deadline for this event's not until, or actually in the upcoming slide, we'll go over the deadlines, but it's still not for about a week or two weeks. So those splits will be out near the end of the month. And similar concept to six on six and 14U, OC rankings, at least with 15U, the first event did count in terms of points. So that allows us to at least have two events that we can use towards OCs, but still just two events with the start of the season being very, I guess, the ranks not being that accurate since teams were two years off. And that we do realize there is a lot of wonkiness with these rankings and they would not be truly accurate. So again, we are looking at some sort of hybrid approach between a self-declare and your rankings based on those two events. And we don't have this 100% finalized yet, but we will be reaching out to the teams, the 15U teams directly for the 15U specific process. 16U. So as you know, we were originally hoping to have that 16U Challenge Cup at Niagara Convention Center later this month. But with the weekend opening up just two weeks later in February 12th and 13th, we thought that was a better, kind of safer route. Not only running the risk of still being in stage two, but if we happen to be out when they say we're going to be out on January 26th, still that two or three day window of not practicing, not doing anything to all of a sudden be in 100% as high as you can right in a tournament. We didn't feel that was the best option for the athletes. So after the Challenge Cup, which is that February 12th and 13th weekend, 16U will then go into a winter league play. One week later start time, just because I'll need that week to compile the results and then create the pods for league play. So that's just why it's on the 18th instead of the 11th. And so with 16U, you would be having three events going up into OCs. You'd have your first fall league play, followed by your single day event and then followed by your winter league play. And I should know as well, actually I just posted all the 16U splits for that February 12th and 13th weekend. So similar to 15U, we don't have access to that Friday. So I do have five events that are scheduled at other pre-booked facilities. But just take a look at our upcoming events as everything is now posted there. Yeah, I should be going to carry. And 17U is getting closer to staying in line with what we like to see in a normal season. In that we're still keeping them on with the, the single day tournaments and not being in the league play concept. So the McGregor Cup, February 5th and 6th. So the McGregor Cup, uh, February fifth and sixth, single day events. And these uh similar sixteen U Challenge Cup, the splits are now posted. So if you're in that event, take a look at our website, all your location splits and schedules are there for you to see. And the Biggarsey Cup, March fifth and sixth, we adjusted the girls, I think they were scheduled a week earlier. Um, but just with the venue availability that we had, uh, we moved the seventeen girls to match up with the boys. So both genders are on that March fifth, sixth. And similar, similar with your previous events, you register for the cup itself. So you, you would be either playing on March fifth or sixth, similar with March, or sorry, February fifth or sixth. Just due to with the lack of venues, we need to have that little bit of flexibility to make the numbers work. And unfortunately, uh, across the board, the sixteen U, seventeen and eighteen U, there are no grand prix events this year. Again, comes down to the lack of venues and we're just trying to. Uh, basically schedule anything that we can be with the, the lack of venues that are available. And the seventeen age group, with this current plan, they'll have three total events leading up to the interior championships. You'll need to enter two of these events in order to qualify and the seeding will be based on top or your best two out of your three events. Eighteen U, so as mentioned earlier, the eighteen U boys event on Jan twenty third, or sorry, Jan twenty ninth and thirtieth has been canceled. Um, but that still leaves two more events, so the eighteen U's will have a total of four events for this indoor regular season. So the Ferlanti Cup, February twelfth and thirteenth, this has not changed at all, this was always part of the original schedule for the eighteen year girls Ferlanti Cup. And the eighteen U boys Ferlanti Cup is February nineteenth or twentieth. Uh, and as mentioned with the grand prix being canceled, that also means there's no two-day grand prix qualifier. So this is essentially just like your normal format in terms of you have premier championship and trillium level events, all being one-day tournaments. The final event for the eighteen U season originally was always a two-day event for all divisions. So whether you're trillium, championship, premier, you would be in a two-day event. But again, with the venue situation right now, we unfortunately are only able to offer this as a single-day tournament. And again, no grand prix, so there will be a premier event uh at the Biggarsey Cup, just no grand prix this year. So the eighteen U in terms of OCs will look very similar to what we normally have done in the past for the eighteen U age group. Since there are four events, and again, this is based on our plan, being able to happen the way we're presenting it right now. But since there would be four events, we can do your top two finish. And the eighteen U girls, Division One at Ontario Championships will again feature that sixteen-team draw with a bit more of a high-performance focus. So uh three out of five matches, it's a bit different of a style of draw and same with the eighteen U boys, Division One, same thing. Um, a top Division One of eight, so that means if you're ranked ninth, you would not be in and you would not have a way to get into. That top eighteen draw at the interior championships. Okay, so here is a summary, quick snapshot. Uh, this one's pretty straightforward for four and four to sixteen U, all the deadlines, January twenty third. So that is a very important date, Jan twenty third at eleven fifty-nine PM. Uh, the sixteen U boys and sixteen U girls, that registration has closed already since that was originally the Jan twenty ninth event. So all those splits and everything's uh posted and yep, so that's good for those age groups. Seventeen U and eighteen U summary, uh, so the. Uh, oh yeah, seventeen U boys and seventeen girls, we moved to January twenty third again. We essentially just put pretty much everything on Jan twenty third um to make it simple and it worked out in terms of our timeline that we needed to. Uh, use to get all the splits posted. Eighteen U boys Ferlanti Cup, oh, that one's passed already and we're just working on those team splits now. And then the final eighteen U boys and girls Biggarsey Cups will be on February twentieth. A few, a few important uh deadlines and in terms of refunds. So across the board, the McGregor Cups we are using for the winter league play. So if your team is currently registered for the McGregor Cup, whether it's four and four, six on six, TNS, or sixteen U. We'll be using that registration download for creating our league play team splits. But since we're making all these changes and with the new winter league play concept, if that doesn't work for your team or if your team's not able to do it. Just email Caitlin if it's for the younger age groups or myself if you're a sixteen U team and we can fully refund your team. Uh, and no worries there since we are making this change after your team has already registered. And we're currently just going through the process of refunding the Biggarsey Cups, the four and four to sixteen U Biggarsey Cups. And uh, I've been in touch with a number of you in terms of check versus MRS refunds. So we'll, I guess that original email was tied with the January events. But if you requested a one check for all your canceled January events, we'll assume that's still the same request. And we'll just tie in the Biggarsey Cup events that you may have already registered into that one check as well. So we're just going through that process as we speak. And then in terms of the fifteen U McGregor Cup, this one again, since it is a date change, your team may have already been registered. And if you're not able to make this new date, again, just email Caitlin and then she can fully refund your team there. Okay, Ontario Championships ranking, oh, a hot topic. I, since as, as a lot of you know, I'm a numbers guy and I, this is one of my favorite parts, looking at the rankings and seedings and scheduling, all that kind of stuff. But as you can imagine, this is gonna be a little tricky this year with very few results. Uh, preseason rankings being very inaccurate, which kind of led to the wonky start to the season. And then ultimately with only one or two events for some of the age groups. It's just a reality that it won't be as accurate as it normally is. So we are asking everyone to kind of take a step back and realize this is a different year. This is, um, yeah, we don't have the regular season that we normally had to produce the, the seeds that we typically have. So we are working, I, I mentioned a little bit earlier, we are working through um different scheduling options, as mentioned, with the self-declare option. We're looking how that would exactly work with the number of teams in each division. So we are aware of all these challenges, we're trying to work through them the best we can. But in short, we do know that it, it's not possible to have perfect seeds going in based on the regular season that we had. So really, uh, Kerry had a great comment here at the bottom of this interior championships is really just kind of a welcome back. Celebration to indoor volleyball rather than, oh my goodness, my team should have been fifteenth and, but we're ranked eighteenth. Like, we're normally even nitpick that, nitpick that type of thing. This is more just a celebration, just number one goal is being back to volleyball and having the event for the kids to play. And of course, we will do our absolute best to try and make the rankings and competitive balance the best we can, but it will be a little bit wonky this year. Just a few reminders, um, because some of these we just updated recently, I think last week. Um, so registration for all seven events has been pushed back until February fourteenth. Uh, teams playing up, we have a registration set up specifically for teams playing up. So if you're a sixteen U team looking to play in the seventeen U interior championships, there's an event called seventeen U interior championships underage waitlist. Which is what you can register for. And this again, normally the very straightforward process, we have underage rankings that are playing in the above-age events. Very easy to, to place them correctly. But again, this year with very, very few underage teams being able to play at the older age groups. Um, some of them, like for example, the seventeen U girls McGregor Cup that I just posted a couple of days ago, we were not able to. Accept a single underage team just due to the lack of venue. So our entire process that we typically use is out the window and we're, we're looking through a few different options as to how uh we can make this work. So it's still TBD, um, but the event, it's, it's free of charge to register for that waitlist. So if you are thinking about registering, you might as well put your team name on there and then we'll publish the official process and how that will work a little bit later. Hotel booking process has been pushed back to start on February fifteenth. Preview links will be available on February seventh. And new, well, this was new, I think it was set in place for maybe last year's OCs or the year before. Careful with all these canceled OCs here, but we do have a new process in place for those teams and clubs that are four hundred plus kilometers away. Just giving them a chance with all the travel that they do throughout the year, um, to give them a chance to book hotels first, um, for the interior championships. Uh, teams entering their rosters and uploading their team photos into MRS by March seventh. Uh, this will be used to populate the OVA champs app for the interior championships. And parents must complete respect in sport prior to March first, twenty twenty-two and enter their certificate number and MRS in their child's profile. OVA staff will be contacting parents directly that are missing their certificate numbers as these must be done in order to play at the interior championships. League play, so these next few slides, uh, just some of the um kind of logistics around the league play and a few uh reminders. So as Joe mentioned with the safety plans for the outdoor, uh, assuming we can be back inside, similar concept. I know all, all of you have been doing this already for your practices, for any maybe exhibition tournaments or exhibition matches that you're hosting. Uh, with the safety plan. And having that on site uh with you. Daily health screening and contact, so this is just a friendly reminder. Um, specifically targeting the hosts or really if you're just hosting a league play match, like a single match. Or if you're hosting the entire pod and all six teams are coming to your event. Uh, you should be looking after the daily health screening and contact tracing, so that might be different based on which venue you're at. Because some venues do this themselves or through your screening form that you fill out, the, the contact info is in there. Or if it's just uh maybe a smaller venue, they don't really have venue staff. As you, as the permit holder would be responsible for keeping track of this information as well. So just touch base with your venue to make sure that you guys are uh on the same page in terms of who is responsible for keeping this information. So our pod splits with the deadline of uh January twenty third. Since the deadline is for all age groups at the same time, we'll be frankly getting these together as fast as we can and posting them uh as soon as we got these pods complete. And they'll be located on our website under upcoming indoor competitions. And just click on your specific age group that you're looking at and then the list of teams will be all down there below. But in addition to that, we will be sending out a welcome league play email, which is essentially, it's a massive email with all the information. Hopefully we don't miss anything, hopefully, it's all the information that you need uh in that one spot. And in that email will be the contact information for the other teams that you're playing. So our previous league play, we only included the indoor team contact. But after we sent out all those emails, we realized a number of indoor team contacts are the indoor team contact for every single team. So it became a bit of a, a mid nightmare for them. Um, so this email, we're gonna include the head coach of each team as well. So then hopefully that captures the correct individual who uh should be on that contact list. And as soon as we send out, uh, sorry Kerry, as soon as we send out the welcome email, your pod is welcoming to start. Um, so you don't have to wait for that official February eleventh date. Results collection, so for the teams that already participate in league play, you're probably fairly familiar with this. Overall, it, it did go pretty good, um, just a couple key things we wanted to point out. Uh, and just really making sure that you select your correct division. Uh, we had a few results where we thought were missing, couldn't find them, but it ended up being uh like a sixteen U event, but it was listed as a fourteen U event. So when we're sifting through these results, it's, it's uh very helpful to have them listed as the correct divisions, so just keep an eye on that. And uh, results we posted, uh, oh yeah, so same thing with our, on our website. By clicking on past events and results, you'll be able to then click on your specific age group and then all the results will be posted. And we try and post these every couple of days, uh, Caitlin and I will just do a refresh of the form stack and then input our. And put the results in the results template, so as they come in, uh, we'll post them. So that's a kind of general note, don't wait until all your league play is finished to submit the results. Feel free, like if you just have a single match on Tuesday, feel free to send that in that night and then within the next couple of days, we'll have that posted on the website. So then the other teams in your pod can also see uh the results as they're happening. And just a note at the bottom too, if you're having a tough, uh, tough time finding location, just let your youth competitions coordinator know. So whether it's myself or Caitlin, and then we can also send out some kind of across-the-board emails. So there were a few instances where the specific pod itself was having trouble, so then we kind of reached out to some nearby pods and were able to find venue or space that way. This is just a quick snapshot of the results template on Formstack when you are submitting them. So as I was mentioning, uh, in terms of the correct division, uh, that's just at the top there. So and then also your championship A, for example, so that information we found on the upcoming indoor events page. Where your team is listed, then it would show the premier championship A, B, C, all the way down um the list. So just keep an eye on that and then make sure you input the correct name for the pod that you're in. Hosting packages, so similar to the fall league play, we'll be sending out one mailbox to each main club contact. And then within that box, we'll have an envelope for each team that registered for league play. So some of the basic things that would include were the score sheets and lineup cards, hand sanitizer. We have a ton of that at the office, so we'd definitely be putting some of that in those boxes and face masks. Along with some of the uh signage that you can post at the venue that you're playing at. So your heads-up posters, your rowing laws, um, and your wallet poster, so the similar posters that you would see at typical OVA events. And medals, uh, so actually fifteen U wouldn't be in league play this time, but with. The six on six and TNS, those league plays will count towards results and medals. So medals will be for the six on six, TNS and sixteen U. And similar to the, the first league play, once all results are in, we'll do a mash, sorry, a mass shipment of these medals. So we'll send one package again to each club and then all the medals that have been won from teams within that club would be in that package. Referees, so we did uh um learn definitely a bit as we're going through league play. As this was a, a very tough process for our official assigners with um just really the chaos. So I think there was around one thousand two hundred matches that happened in the first fall league play. So rather than a typical OVA event where you have twenty-one matches, where an assender just sees and schedules all twenty-one with one location. A lot of these one-off matches were happening, so it, it definitely was a, a big, big task for the assigners. So thankfully through the feedback from the assigners and, and Calvin from the OVA, we came up with a Formstack link. For requesting officials, so it's just to help streamline the specific questions that every assender needs to know. And then just keeps it in a nicer format. And again, something I want to highlight to you in terms of the, the seven business days, um, that is for sure your best bet. To get an official to your site, and I know some of this is last minute, like, oh, gym time opened up, let's try and schedule a match here. Uh, you can still reach out to them, but it's, it's definitely not guaranteed that an official could be assigned at that short of notice. So definitely target for that uh seven business days in advance to your match or matches that you plan on having. And if you aren't able to uh find, like if you email the assender and there, there's not an available official, the maps can still take place. Uh, whether you might have a volunteer official, maybe a parent on the team has had some experience. Um, especially at the younger age groups, like a four and four event, it's not as uh important to have an official at the event. And so just keep that in mind if you are not able to find one. And I guess this goes back to my very original comment, kind of when I started uh that first slide of the presentation where. This isn't not ideal scenario for everyone and we're, it's really just, you gotta kind of adapt and um kind of make do with what, what you can given the circumstances. And then, oh, just as a reminder, OVA will be uh covering all the official fees, so that's part of your team registration fee when you sign up for league play. Host fees and payments, so we do have a hosting expense form that is different than your typical hosting expense form. It's specifically set up for league play uh matches or league play events that you host, if you host the entire league play at one location. So each submission mu- must include a copy of the permit, which identifies the time slot that was used. All payments will be made out to the club, not an individual person. All expense forms must be received prior to April 1st. And as a reminder, the OVA will reimburse the permit holder for 90 minutes of their costs for each two out of three match played per court. Each host receives $20 match fee, uh, like a hosting fee at their venue, just because we do realize there is a bit of extra work for hosting these matches, for example, figuring out the safety plan or figuring out the, um, how the COVID screen is going to work. So that type of thing. So let's say if you hosted five matches, you would receive five times $20, so an extra a hundred dollars, uh, for the work that you're doing in kind of organizing that, those matches. And just a quick reminder about the, the host expense form. So it is, cause I know a lot of clubs are hosting multiple matches. If you happen to have a venue that's, that's available, that the easiest option is to send, um, a combined form, but the one kind of caveat to that is that each form must be, so if you're going to send a combined form, it can only be combined for that specific pod that you have. So for example, if you're a club that, I'll just keep it simple. If you have two teams in your club in league play, one's in a 16U league play and one's in a 14U league play. And you hosted in, let's say 10 matches in each, you would submit one hosting expense claim form for the 14U. And all 10 can be in there. And then you would send another form for the 16U and again, all 10 can be in there. That's just to really help our Mario or accountant to keep track of how he, or I don't know how he keeps track of this puzzle, but keeping track of who's been paid and how many matches have been paid within each pod. OVA coach eligibility. So, uh, just a few key reminders here. For OVA screening policy, uh, they must submit a volunteer sector screen or enhance policy, or sorry, enhanced police information check completed within three years. They must complete the OVA screening disclosure form or screening renewal form annually online. Uh, they must complete the following training, making headway, which is free, uh, through that link there on the locker. Coaches association of Canada safe sports training, which is free and available on the locker as well. All individuals registered in a head coach or club technical role must also complete the following. Foundations of volleyball, making ethical divi- decisions online evaluation. And coaches are required to admit all the conditions of the coach eligibility policy in order to be covered by OVA insurance. If a lawsuit is initiated against a coach who has not completed the coach eligibility requirements, OVA's insurance company may deny coverage. So that's an important piece, um, to keep in mind. And, uh, Oakland's definitely been heading up a lot of this, uh, the immense side of this to keep you tracked. So if you do have any questions, uh, or he may be reaching out to you if he is going through the list and, and see if some things aren't complete. Okay. That is it. I'm sure we have a ton of questions that have popped up.
And John Mark. Um, okay. So I just wanted to first make a statement that, um, all of the questions I've taken and put into a word document. We'll be creating an FAQ to be posting, um, on the website, hopefully tomorrow. Um, there are a lot of comments as well, um, that I have also put aside for our YC team to discuss. So if we don't say your comment, it is still being, um, discussed later on. Just wanted to say that. So to start with some questions, um, is the OVA for OC's scheduled for four and four, a one day event or a two day event?
That would be a two day event for four and four.
Um, how will I know if I am registered for Ontario championships?
So if you're not sure, well, you would have paid the, the full P, uh, sorry, full paid that check here. You would have paid already. So you should have seen it come off your credit card. But if you are unsure, you can just send myself or Caitlin an email and we can look at the registered team list.
Registered team list will also be posted, uh, once the registration deadline closes.
But if you just want to double check email, Mark or myself, um, are we still having wild cards for underage teams if they want to play up for the rest of the season?
So yes, the rest of the season, we still do have those, um, events in MRS that are titled, like the event you're hoping to sign up for, and then in brackets underage waitlist. And again, that's just a complete random draw because it's such a small amount of teams, like each event. I'm typically seeing that maybe one, two, or even three max that are getting invited into these out of like 30 to 40 on the waitlist. So yeah, it's just, I just grab a num- random number generator from Google and if your team's a lucky one, I'll be contacting you.
Uh, have you thought about scheduling matches during the March break since most people are not going anywhere?
Funny that you bring that up. We can't really go into much detail, but there is, we just kind of a lot of recent information. We just found out from Niagara that there's potential for some more weekends opening up in March. Nothing's for sure. We're very early process. We're trying to figure that all out this week. So that's basically all I can say is stay tuned, potential down the road.
I'm curious as why the OVA has elected to eliminate tournaments for the younger players. For example, TNS groups who are crucially developmental years haven't played a tournament in two years. How can you justify for the older athletes who have played tournaments since the start have a priority over our younger athletes?
Certainly a great question and a very tough, tough decision on our end when looking at, these are the available venues that we have. And how can we make this work? So I, I guess really in short, it came down to two, two things. One being the older kids, especially 18 and 17 year, a lot of them, this is their final year ever of volleyball. A, a very small percent go on to play post-secondary school. So essentially this is it for their volleyball career. So we felt it was important to give those older age groups to kind of that last kick at the can, I guess you could say, uh, for their event. And number two, in terms of league play and, um, I don't want to say necessarily like the quality of venue, but, uh, the younger age groups are able to play in smaller venues, uh, than the older age groups. So for example, four and four, six on six, you do have a little bit more flexibility in terms of the quality of venue as you would, um, the older age groups. So that became a little bit easier when trying to find venues for, for league play. But overall, it was a tough decision, but unfortunately with the lack of venues, that was the route that we had to go.
It's also important to note, like, I think Mark touched on this before. It is a bit of a numbers game. Our older age divisions do have smaller numbers than our younger age divisions. And this allows us to put these age divisions in facilities that we've already booked. So if we chose to put, um, six on six, for instance, in our pre-booked facilities, we were looking at 98 registered teams there. Um, and they wouldn't fit in what we have, whereas our 17 new teams and our 18 new teams do have lower numbers. And we could service them all in one go without selecting who within that age category would actually play a tournament.
Um, will pods for league play be made up of two pods, four teams with medal rounds, consolation matches and so on?
Well, great question. I forgot to mention this actually. I had a note to mention it, but I totally forgot. So a big piece of feedback that we did receive was, um, in terms of how the format was set up for league play. As some of you may have realized, the younger age groups were pods of six. And mainly because there wasn't a playoff for that, because it didn't count for medals. So that, that made kind of the easy decision for the pod six. And then the older age groups, we had pods of eight, which essentially were two pods, or sorry, two pools of four that would do their own round robin and then meet up for a crossover. But one of the most popular pieces of, uh, feedback we received was that became very difficult from a scheduling standpoint. We, the first round robin was not too bad because you knew right away, okay, these are the three other teams you need to play. Great. Makes sense. Let's work that out. But then when it came to, you had to wait for the other pool to finish their matches before you could even start your crossover. And then for you to have your second crossover match, you still had to wait for that first one to finish. So it became a very logistical kind of headache for, uh, for pods. So based on that feedback across the board for any age group in league play. Um, so that would be four and four, six on six, TNS and 16U. The pods will be of six and it will just be a single round robin. And one other thing I forgot to mention was it also is very difficult for the team, like the satellite teams. Cause as you know, there, it's impossible to have everyone perfectly from a geography standpoint. There's always going to be a few teams that are coming in from a distance. It's just the way, uh, the numbers work. So that became even more difficult. Let's say you had a team from North Bay. They came down for, um, let's say round robin and a lot were able to utilize one venue and do a few of those matches. So they didn't have to come down for each, but then to figure out your crossover scenario and then still wait for the next crossover, it, it again, was a very, uh, tough thing to schedule. So, uh, yeah, across the board, it'll be pools of six and just a single round robin. So you, every team still gets in your, your five, two out of three matches.
Yes. Um, for 15U, when they get their event on Feb 26th, 7th, why can't they have a spring league for a third event afterwards?
So that just came down to the timing. Uh, the kind of the two biggest feedback, as mentioned, the one about the, the scheduling. The next biggest, actually I'd say it's pretty similar in terms of, um, the number of emails that came back was in terms of the timing and the length of time needed to schedule these matches. So our originally play, when we posted the splits, I think it was around four and a half to five weeks, uh, timeline. And upon review, we realized that was much too short, which is why now you see the February 11th to 20, March 27th. And especially with March break being in there, uh, that large gap was, was needed to schedule everything. So from the results coming in after that February 26th, 27th, 15 year event, we would then need to take all those results, schedule everyone, and then you would only have like two and a half to three weeks to play the entire league play. And two of those weekends are March break. So unfortunately it did come down to just the timing of it. But again, can't go into too much detail, but there's stuff being in the works with Niagara. So stay tuned on that front.
Um, what is the OVA's long-term plan to address the facility shortage, knowing that league play is very challenging for teams outside of the GTA?
Fantastic question. And well, I'm assuming the question is referring to next season because essentially this plan, uh, brings us to, uh, the interior championships. There are a few things we're looking at, but obviously the big thing is we are still hoping that it would be a combination of both. Cause also from a financial perspective, as you all are probably well aware from what your practices and gym permits are costing at these private facilities. It's, it's substantially higher cost, um, to run at these facilities. And we really don't want to double team fees in order to kind of break even scenario. So we are still looking at, uh, a hybrid approach. But we do realize we will need to be in a lot more of these venues. And kind of one positive of this experience is it did allow us to build relationships with a few new private facilities. Uh, like some brand new ones that opened up this year and being the first tenants in there, we were able to lock in a large number of dates that would, will hopefully keep going for years to come. So that will definitely add to our total number of kind of non-school board permits that we'll be able to use in the future. And the convention center style too. That's, that's always been something that we've kind of toyed with and like, ah, is that an option? But that's again, without going into detail in the works, uh, and we are kind of investigating, investigating that option as well for future seasons.
Um, are we able to submit one file that contains all score sheets? Or do we need to submit an individual, individual, um, sheet as this due to a Formstack restriction?
Okay. So when you're submitting, yes, unfortunately the way it's set up, it would need to be individual. And that also does help Caitlin and I are into when we're sorting through all these results and keeping track what's been submitted, what's not been. Uh, and also our accountant looks at that as well. So it, it's very, I know it's a bit time consuming, uh, adding that score sheet, but it, uh, is definitely very helpful having one score sheet with one submission.
Uh, is four and four Ontario championships, April 1st and 2nd, so Friday, Saturday, or April 2nd, 3rd, Saturday, Sunday? There's, um, apparently some information out there.
Oh shoot. Well, it wouldn't be April 1st or 2nd, because the first weekend of OC's is not until, was it like the 15th or whatever that Easter weekend is, I shouldn't have this memorized by now. Um, yeah, that first 14th, 15th, 16th, 17th, 18th, 19th, that would be the first weekend. I forget offhand which one is four and four. Do you know Caitlin?
I don't know off by hand, but it is all on our website. All of the information for Ontario championships is being updated right now. Um, so all of the information, especially for hotel booking, everything is up there. Uh, so you can just, uh, check that out after the presentation. Also to go with that, um, there's a question about booking rooms for Ontario championships and what times everything will start, whether they need to book night for, uh, night or, um, sorry, night one or night two.
So all that hotel booking information, um, Mark mentioned in the presentation. So preview links go up on the 7th. And then the booking starts on the 15th. Um, again, all that information is posted on the website under our accommodations and, um, waves and any information like that will be posted after the registration deadline. So we have to know our numbers and our registration numbers before we can actually assign teams a morning wave or an afternoon wave.
And just to, uh, kind of add to that, when Carrie says waves, it just is the actual division. So like, let's say 16 new girls, you'd have division one, two, three and four. That would be notified on the website. So you know at least where division one is. But just keep in mind, your team won't actually know which division you're in 100% until all results are in. And this year's going to be a little bit tight because normally we would be having age groups ending as early as that last week in February. So then we could pump out those final rankings, like the first week in March, so they would know already. But with league play ending March 27th, and I believe, well, 18 news ending that first week in April, all those final rankings will not be posted until that early, early April timeframe. So just keep that in mind.
To go along with what you just said, um, provincials is until April 22nd for 15U girls. Why can you not do a league play that goes until April 2nd and gives you three to four weekends to, um, plan them out for OC's?
Uh, we are, yeah, just to, we are, do have plans in the works. Um, we are kind of examining our timelines and, um, things like that. We also have to remember that there's a lot of planning that goes into OC's and, um, this year's being a specific or specifically is very administratively heavy on both Mark and Caitlin and, and the rest of us. So we need to give ourselves enough time to make sure we're getting work done and prepping for Ontario championships. But stay tuned. Um, we do have things in the works. Um, I don't know if Mark or Caitlin want to touch on that, but.
Yeah, it's funny. It's when we came up with this last week, everything was as we know it. And as all of you know, things changed on the fly. So yeah, it was, yeah, we're working through stuff as we speak. So, so yeah, stay tuned.
Almost, uh, we just have a couple more questions. We're almost done here. Um, when will officials be notified of their respective assignments for Ontario championships?
Carrie, do you know that one?
Um, I believe that might be a, assignments as in what your schedule will be working. Um, that probably depends a lot on when our schedule is all released. Um, so it, uh, it's kind of like a trickle down. So first a registration has to close. We have to rank teams. We have to split teams. Schedules are posted. Um, I would check with your local regional signer or even your referee, um, chair for your region. And, and maybe they'll be able to help you with that. I don't know if Cal- Calvin Chang is on the call today. I don't know if he wants to pipe in if I've misspoke or anything.
I just messaged him. So we'll see if he, um, in the meantime, we'll just go to the next question. Uh, can teams, say 17U, play an 18U Ontario championships if they were never lucky enough to play in an 18U event?
Yes. So that will be obviously one of the changes to our normal protocol. Cause typically you would have to have competed in two events while playing up, because then you would have a seed going into the championship, Ontario championships. But since this year, so few teams have been given that kind of essentially winning that lottery pick for each time. Uh, you would not, you do not have to compete in two events. You don't even have to compete in a single event. And that's kind of like the, the route we're looking at. And then in terms of the exact seating and how that works, that's what we're trying to iron out, uh, right now in the backend.
Perfect. And to answer the referee question, what Carrie said, we're looking at a couple of weeks prior because we do have to book some hotels as well. But the specific date is still unknown. Um, but you will know in due time. Um, and can you please remind everybody where Ontario championships is taking place?
Yes. And so I just wanted, I just realized I forgot one point from the previous question in terms of the playing up at Ontario championships. The only, cause I said, you don't have to compete as a 17U team in any 18U. The only, because I said you don't have to compete as a 17U team in any 18U events. But you still would have had to compete in the required number of 17U events to be playing your 17U OCs. Just because we'll be looking at that rank as well to help decide where teams should be placing. And that would kind of prevent a team from technically, I guess, playing no events and then signing up for an older age event and kind of sneaking in that way. But yeah, so your regular qualification process would then qualify you for the older age groups. And in terms of OC location, it's a combo for the first time ever, I guess. Back in 2019, we had University of Guelph, but that was kind of a smaller satellite location. So this is our first time where we're kind of having two large venues just because of the number of teams. So there'll be two locations, the Rim Park facility, as everyone knows and loves. And then the Paramount Fine Food Center in Mississauga. So that is, has been used for Ontario summer games in the past. And we'll be setting up 12 courts on the Astroturf field in that facility.
Awesome. Thank you. So I think that's all the questions for right now. If you have any other questions, feel free to send an email or call any of us. All of our information is on the website as well, if you need that. We thank you very much for spending your Monday night with us and we hope you guys have a great night.